The Board of Education will come to order. Is there a motion to enter into executive session?
I move to enter into executive session to discuss personnel, collective bargaining, or illegal property acquisition issues and student issues. Maryland Local Government Code Article Section 9-512A, 1, 2, 6, and 10.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Everyone in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The ayes have it. The board will now enter into executive session. The Board of Education will reconvene at this time. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Aye.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. There we go.
Welcome. Good morning. Please turn off your cell phones if you haven't done so already. I'd like to make some introductions this morning. We have Anna Loughlin with us this morning, President of the Education Association of St. Mary's County. Anna, good morning. How are you? We have Liz Purcell-Leskin, Maryland State Education Association Uniserved Director. Good morning. Nice to see you this morning. Harold Siskin. Harold, how are you? Harold is the co-president of the St. Mary's County Public Schools Retiree Association. And Dawn Simpson. Dawn, I thought I saw you. Dawn, how are you this morning? Dawn is the school liaison officer, NAS Pax River. Oh, Meg's here. McDonald, how are you? How are you doing this morning? Meg is MSEA Uniserved Director. Thank you for being here this morning. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Everyone in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The ayes have it. Board members, I'm asking you to turn in your board reports this morning since time is issued. Hearing no objections. Can we do that?
Yes.
Thank you, and we'll proceed with the superintendent's report.
I have a... Good morning, board members. Great seeing you. Good morning to everybody in the community as well who's in attendance this morning. I recognize the time is of essence today. We've got a number of items on our agenda to move through, which culminates this afternoon with a visit to one of our middle schools, which I'm delighted to see that as well. We're going to go visit the Colonial Williamsburg Project Demonstration at the Leonardtown Middle School, and one of our community partners is going to join us as well. If you remember, one of our community partners made a donation of $10,000 to this particular effort, and that's Mr. Chuck Bryson, and he will be joining us as well to see this program fully in action, and we're very excited about that. So, the issue in terms of our time is devoted to the fact that we have a very small window of instructional time to see this project in place with our outstanding teacher, Tammy Payne. So, we're moving forward. So, I'm going to get right into this. Lots of activity in the school system as we prepare for spring break, which is coming up. If you've been following all the activity in the school system, we resolved all of our snow days. We've put out several communications regarding that from the student perspective for parents and family members and staff members regarding vacation planning, spring break, et cetera. All that information's been put out. We've also had great conversation with our associations, with all of our staff members, making our adjustments for our staffing plan for the makeup of those days as well. And the good news is, is that we're going to be ending school on the assigned times that we have in our calendar and making certain because we have to recognize that there's a pressure points in terms of everything that you do. And so, we also have to prepare for summer programs that are occurring as well and a lot of activities, summer cleaning, et cetera, that has to happen. So, I'm very pleased with that. Very busy as a school system. As I said, spring break is next week. The holiday for Easter will be upon us as well. And then, we come back and we're into this heavy timeframe with all the activities that occur, which quickly moves us into graduation. Hard to believe, Peter, that that will be right around the corner for all of us in that sense. But as I stated, lots of great things occurring regarding our student performance. Recently, we had the St. Mary's County was represented at the Prince George's County Area Science Fair, and in the junior division, St. Mary's County Public School students took six out of the 16 first-place category prizes. So, we're very pleased about that. For the junior division grand prize, St. Mary's County took both nominations. The grand prize winners were Jim Toledo and Olivia Soha, both from Spring Ridge Middle School. So, we're very proud of them. In the senior division, we said six out of the 16 took first-place categories. For the senior division, again, SMCPS took two of the four nominations. The grand prize winners were Minnie Fahami and Michael Lopez, both from Great Mills, and both grand prize winners will now be competing, listen to this, ladies and gentlemen, in the Intel National Science Fair out in California. So, just give them a round of applause because we should. That's exciting. Our students continue to impress me every day. Then, this past weekend, Dr. Marr keeps me informed with all the weekend activities occurring outside the region, and 15 of our teams represented the St. Mary's County so well in the Destination Imagination Tournament. The 13 teams included over 80 students from Leonardtown Elementary, Town Creek, Chesapeake Public Charter School, Park Hall, Leonardtown Middle, Spring Ridge, and Great Mills High School. Amongst our 13 extraordinary teams, two teams advanced to the global finals, both from the charter school, The Power of Five and The Superstar Angels. And let me just read their names. Morgan Hunt, Jolie Ganzel, Alani Prentzow, Courtney Rosenstant, and Caitlin Kovach, and the managers Lynn Hunt and Mary Beth Ganzel. That's The Power of Five. Superstar Angels, Abby Van Nico, Annalise Hess, Jasmine Cooper, Katie McHugh, Emily Nelson, Sarah Engay, Reagan Angle, and managers Leslie Hess and Rebecca Van Nico. So, give them a round of applause if you would as well. And they were The Superstar Angels. The global finals are on May 21st through the 24th, and that is going to be at the University of Tennessee. Mrs. Washington said she wants to go national, international, and worldwide. We are, in that sense. Want to congratulate our outstanding SMECO 2014 Outstanding Mathematics and Science Teacher Award winners. We had a wonderful event last week where they were honored, and we're going to do more recognition of them, but I wanted to give that public recognition today. Cheryl Wright from Leonardtown Elementary School for math, Erica Samuel from Leonardtown Middle School for math, and Judith Evans, Chopticon High School for math. And I believe their pictures are still on the website that we put a big display on for them as well. For science, Stephanie Baruda from Spring Ridge Middle School, April Skinner, Chesapeake Public Charter School, and Robin Solomon from Leonardtown High School. All of those three are science. And SMECO just does a wonderful job. My good friend Joe Slater, the CEO of the organization, all the leadership was there, treated everybody to a very nice meal. Our supervisors were there as well. Alex Jaffers representing us as well, Becky Loker, Jason Hayes. I'm sure I missed somebody there as well. All represented, and they provided the overview that evening. So, nice job to them. Want to congratulate Margaret Brent Middle School for receiving the prestigious Platinum Fit Friendly Award from the American Heart Association. A big award regarding that. Congratulations to George Washington Carver Elementary School for receiving the National School Health Award. This is awards day, ladies and gentlemen, I'm just telling you. They will be recognized during the Health Department Gold Star Awards later today that you'll be a part of as well. Now, this is some very interesting news, and I'm very pleased about this. This is a very prestigious nomination. St. Mary's County Public Schools was recently nominated by Master Sergeant Cynthia Lilly, a special education teacher at Margaret Brent Middle School, for the 2014 Secretary of Defense Freedom Award, and the winners will be announced in August. However, in reviewing the nominations, the Maryland Committee for Employer Support of the Guard and Reserve selected the St. Mary's County Public School System for the prestigious Award Above and Beyond Award. This award will be presented on Saturday, April 12th, up in Annapolis, and we are very, very pleased about this. We just found out about it. It's a prestigious nomination, and we are very thrilled about that as well. So, that's information I wanted to share. Additionally, as you know, we have a tremendously robust partnership with the Sheriff's Department. We continue to do our training. We had a very wonderful training the sheriff and I participated in at Benjamin Banneker, discussing all the enhancements regarding emergency response and protocols, and our own Mr. Mike Wyant, who's back in the corner, our Director of Safety and Security, led that as well. And Mike just does a tremendous job with full fidelity. The Superintendent's Advisory Committee met this week. It's constant issues of keeping our community, our students, and our staff safe. And finally, Dr. Raspa, I'm really tending to time. I'm going to enter the names for the Work Hard and Be Nice Awards into the record, but we have, again, lots of individuals who were nominated for the monthly award for March of 2014 for Work Hard and Be Nice. Our employees continue to impress us. Our students continue to impress me daily. And as I've stated, my final comment is, is that those of you who are following along with our school calendar, next week is spring break. Schools will be closed for the week, and then, the Monday after, April 21st, we will open back up on April 22nd. And again, follow the adjustments for our employees regarding offices being closed because the one holiday where we were open for President's Day is now adjusted also on the Thursday before Good Friday. So, the offices will be closed Thursday, Friday, and Monday. Students will be closed for teachers as well next week, and then, we come back for the final push into the end of the school year where we're going to have another outstanding year with the graduation rate. Hopefully, this year, I've been told, well over 91.5 percent. Those are my words, quite frankly. That's the expectation. Set the expectation. Name it, frame it, and then claim it. That's where we're going with it right now. So, we're going to claim that great graduation rate again. So, board members, on this beautiful spring day, I send it back to you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Materano. Let's move on into recognitions. The first recognition for this morning is the Northrop Grumman sponsorship. Mr. Smith?
Good morning.
Northrop Grumman Corporation's generous sponsorship of the St. Mary's County Public Schools Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math Program has allowed us to make significant impact and inroad into the learning that takes place in our schools every single day. Their sponsorship helps SMCPS move toward our complete goal of incorporating an enhanced program in areas of science, technology, engineering, and STEM. For years, SMCPS has received a generous sponsorship for the STEM program, and this year is my understanding that that sponsorship will continue with $5,000 being awarded to the system. We would like to recognize the Northrop Grumman Corporation Lead Executive, Mr. Scott Stewart, and the STEM Coordinator for Pax River, Mr. Mike Kibler, for their sponsorship of the STEM program and their generous support of the work we do with children.
You can tell they've been here before, they're going to walk out. So, we are so pleased to have you back with us. Good. Excellent. Come on over a little closer. Bring the whole thing here as well. Once again, these are two really great friends, as well as business partners to the school system. Northrop Grumman has consistently stepped up to the plate, has supported us in terms of our efforts. Both vested interests in terms of community members. One has a spouse who works for the school system and students who graduated from the school system. The other one also has great students in the school system as well and very engaged parents. So, vested interest in terms of the well-being and the health of our school system, as well as also the direct link from the partnership as well. So, we are absolutely thrilled as we advance our very robust agenda regarding the STEM education, our focus in science regarding the wonderful programs that we have in place for our young people. And as you recognize, the support that we have to do the additional programs is oftentimes supported by our partners. As stated today, when one of our business partners that we're going to visit this afternoon, that $10,000 addition for that program advancement that was not part of the curriculum advancement in our budget, allows us to have that opportunity for our young people. And the programs that you put in place, the financial support allows that as well. So, we thank you. You're quite the local celebrity. Are you still on that big billboard in Calvert County?
Just came down.
Just came down, all right. I see him all the time. It's, I know that guy. I know him. It's wonderful. So, without further ado, give them a big round of applause, if you would, for their consistent and sustained support. The operative word there is sustained. It's year after year, and I never want to take it for granted. I just want you to recognize in the leadership of your corporation to let them know how appreciative we are. So, without further ado, let me let you both say some words as well to the board. Thank you.
Thanks for the kind words, Dr. Materano. Simply put, Northrop Grumman really enjoys being active in the community. I enjoy this job with the company because it gives me the freedom to identify the activities and the needs in the community that are best supported, and this is one that will not go away. Each year, we've been able to do this. This is now our seventh year, and we're proud to, we'll be doing it for many years to come. Mike is, I work for the corporate entity of the company, so I handle a lot of the financial stuff. Mike is a great partner because he's in the school systems. We've been able to reach out to folks like Kelly Hall and identify new opportunities throughout the year. So, I'm going to let Mike get up and talk about some of the activities that we do. But again, thank you for the recognition, Dr. Materano, and you guys, I know, are doing great things in the school system with the support we give you. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Come on over, Mike.
So, good morning. Happy to be here with you today. So, as Scott said, he and I work together to coordinate our overall STEM activities. So, he operates at the corporate level, and I work as the coordinator for our local volunteer related activities. So, that supports our multi-pronged approach to support through financial means and through volunteer time. So, this year, as in years before, we have a couple of exciting things taking place. At the national level, Northrop Grumman continues to support STEM-related activities like weightless flights of discovery, the Echo Classroom, the Earthwatch Educator Program, which are all resources that support teachers and their development and knowledge and understanding of STEM-related activities. At the very local level, we were involved in support of the Flight Academy that was recently established at the Forest Technical Center, which as former aviators, that's very near and dear to us as we like to see youngsters getting involved in aviation. In fact, tomorrow, we'll be going back into the STEM 4 classroom to teach our history of navigation and principles of GPS operation. So, that's always a fun event, not only, I believe, for the kids because they seem to enjoy it, but me and the team of engineers that go in like that because it's a change of pace. In two weeks, we'll be going into the STEM 5 classroom as the students embark upon their end-of-year capstone project. So, as they begin to formulate their end-of-year science projects, we help them with the critical thinking and organizing and arranging their experiments so that they, you know, have proper controls and setups and methodology and all that kind of thing. Oh, and of course, we're also working here at the local level to support students in the STEM program headed to Space Camp through some financial backing for students who might not otherwise be able to afford the opportunity. Both my kids had the opportunity to attend, and both came back with great things to say about the Space Camp experience, so we're happy to be able to support that for the students here in the local community. And that's everything. Thanks again for having us.
Wonderful, Mike. Great seeing you. Give them a round of applause, if you would, again. So, I appreciate how well you articulated the directed impact. So, the board, when we get these kind of in-kind donations, I want community to recognize that those are designated in supporting a specific program and a particular entity regarding that. And so, you can see the advancement of these dollars in support of what it actually does and how it helps support the other parts of the program. So, with that, Dr. Raspa, I turn it back to you. We're going to try to see if you guys can hang around just a little longer because we want to get a picture as well, if we could. We can do that?
Okay. After the recognitions are over, we'll go ahead and have a picture taken.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Very good. Wonderful.
Next recognition is the Month of the Military Child and Month of the Young Child. Mrs. Hall and Ms. Kilcoyne.
Good morning.
Good morning.
April is the month of the military child. In St. Mary's County Public Schools, we are extremely pleased to recognize and celebrate the many contributions of the military in our community. We are fortunate to have nearly 5,000 military-connected children in our school system. They enrich and enhance our schools and our community. Schools are celebrating the month of the military child in many ways, including assemblies, special plays, skits, and other learning activities. Parent coffee groups for military-affiliated parents are being hosted at schools. Schools are singing patriotic songs and geography activities. Every school marquee in the county reflects April as the month of the military child. And on Friday, we moved the date, we're going, on Friday, April 11th, we're encouraging everyone to wear purple in honor and support of the military. The real day is April 15th, but we're going to be out on spring break, so we made a decision to move it. And we have now for you a very, very special presentation that highlights our military children from Greenview Knowles, Evergreen Elementary School, and Green Holly Elementary School, and also the JROTC group at Chopticon High School. And we'd like to show you that before we have the proclamation signed.
April is the month of the military child. More than 5,000 military-connected children and youth attend St. Mary's County Public Their momentous contributions to their family and society and their resilience inspire us every day.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I am an American military child.
I am a warrior in my own right and a member of a military family.
I serve with my military parent who serves the people of the United States.
I will always place the mission first.
To stand beside, behind, and with my family.
I will never accept defeat.
I will never quit.
I will not leave a fellow military breath hurting.
I will stand beside them.
I am disciplined but young, physically and mentally tough but vulnerable.
I will ask for help when I need it.
I am adaptable and I am resilient.
I stand ready to say goodbye, whisper "I miss you," and shout "Welcome home."
I am the representative of the American military family and the American way of life.
I am an American military child.
I am an American military child.
I am an American military child.
And that was made with our real military children. Thank you. I want to give special thanks to the James A. Forrest Career and Technology Center for assisting with us and making sure that the film worked, and we're just very, very, very grateful for their support. Now, we're very fortunate today. We have Mrs. Dawn Simpson, who is our military liaison at Pax River and a tremendous partner. Mrs. Simpson, if you would walk the red carpet, and Dr. Materano, if you'd please join us with the proclamation, that would be wonderful.
So, board members, I think this has been framed extremely well. What we need to understand, and we continue to advance in our community, that basically a third of our student population has some direct correlation and connection to the military. And so, that becomes very clear in terms of our decision-making, programs that we implement, how we operate as a school system, and we also want to be viewed as a very friendly school system in the sense of that transition. Seeking first to understand, then to be understood is the philosophy of understanding the stressors that our young people are under, families are under, when they move, and how we transition into the school district. So, we've done a lot of work to make certain with our counselors, with our schools, that that's occurring. With the addition of Dawn as our school liaison officer, she's a tremendous advocate. We have tremendous working relationships with the commanding officers that have been in place, the military leadership, the admirals. The whole base has been tremendous. We think about our partnership with Northrop Grumman. We think about the aspect of opening up the gates for our students to be able to come on to the actual base to get enhanced opportunities instructionally. So, there's just so much, and the list goes on and on and on, from basic coordination of buses, basic coordination of snow days, I mean, all the logistics that have to occur when individuals live on base and how we access it. All of that has been basically mitigated and easier to address as a result of the communications that we have, and all benefiting the young people that we have, you know, in that sense. So, we're very pleased. And our principals and teachers have been very much trained with professional development to provide that assistance because it's extremely difficult for a child who's made numerous moves. I talked to a child who was in 11th grade and said that he had moved like seven times. I'm sure there are even larger numbers than that. Think about that transition when we want to maintain stability for our young people and how that affects instruction and progress. So, with all that said, the month of the military child being April, whereas thousands of Americans have demonstrated their patriotism and commitment to freedom by serving in and for the United States Armed Services, and whereas there are more than 5,000 military-connected children and youth that attend St. Mary's County Public Schools, and whereas military-connected children and youth continue to make momentous contributions to families, schools, communities, the nation, our state, St. Mary's County, and whereas these children are a source of pride and honor to all of us, and it is only fitting that we take the time to let them know that we are valued, that they are valued and supported and recognize that military connective serves too. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of St. Mary's County does hereby proclaim April as the month of the military child in the St. Mary's County Public Schools and the community. All school staff and students are encouraged to recognize this month as the month of the military child with appropriate ceremonies and activities that honor, support, and thank the military-connected children. Signed, the ninth day of April, by all the sitting board members at the dais and myself. We thank you as a representative for our military children, and we want to commend you for your efforts, recognizing the words that I said earlier in the sense of support that is necessary to make certain we're supporting our young people, and that we will be having our Purple Up Friday event on this Friday, recognizing it is next week's in celebration of that. So, ladies and gentlemen, join me in a thunderous round of applause for the support provided and the acknowledgement, and let me present this to you that you in hope will term present that to the leadership as well. And that DVD is wonderful. Dawn, go ahead and say some words, if you would, please.
Well, on behalf of the commanding officer who was unable to be here today, Captain Chevchuck, we'd like to thank you for your continued support of our military children. Transitioning in and out of schools is never easy, but it certainly is easier here in St. Mary's County Public Schools, and I'm privileged to be able to share that information with our inbound families, and rest assured, they will receive a quality education when they arrive, and also a smooth transition thanks to the support that we receive from our school principals and counselors and registrars throughout the system. And Kelly, thank you for the effort you've gone through today to put the video together and the proclamation and all the activities that are happening here in St. Mary's County Public Schools. You certainly do go above and beyond in your efforts, and what a shining example it is, not only here in the month of April, in the month of the military child, but throughout the school year. So, thank you for all that you do.
Thank you as well. And board members, I hope you've noticed the banner that's sitting in the front. We'll have that on display all through the month of April. And one final piece of information, I think it's important for the press to hear this as well in all of our community. There are over 13,000 school systems in America when you start looking at the numbers. 13,000 school systems in America, varying in ranges from a million students to a couple hundred students. We are on the list of the top 25 largest school systems in America that contains the largest percentage of military students. And sometimes, I need to frame it in terms of data points so people see why we do what we do, and the main tenet of which you've espoused is the fact of providing support for our families, making certain that they're able to matriculate within our school system and assimilate quickly to be productive families, and supporting the families who are dealing with those transitions so that we can have the productive students in schools so that they're not missing a beat as well. So, thank you very much. We appreciate it. Wonderful. Thank you, Kelly. Okay, very good. All right.
Thank you.
Dawn, if you're waiting a little longer, we'll get a picture too.
April is also the month of the young child, and I'm going to ask Mrs. Cindy Kilcoyne, the... the coordinating supervisor of early childhood programs, to join me.
As we just said, April is the national month of the young child, and in the St. Mary's County Public Schools, we are very proud of our early childhood pathway where all children birth through age five are involved daily in appropriate learning activities to set them on a strong course for their academic careers. We hope that you will enjoy the presentation we're about to highlight using, we're about to show you highlighting the children who are enrolled in our early childhood programs in St. Mary's County Public Schools.
Mrs. Charbonnet, would you please turn the lights off?
April is the month of the young child, an annual celebration that focuses attention on the needs of young children and their families.
Days of the week. Days of the week. Days of the week, days of the week, days of the week. There's Sunday and there's Monday, there's Tuesday and there's Wednesday, there's Thursday and there's Friday, and then there's Saturday, days of the week. Days of the week. Days of the week, days of the week, days of the week.
The St. Mary's County Public School System recognizes that the early childhood years laid the foundation for children's success in school and later in life. For that reason, the St. Mary's County Public School System provides several programs to ensure that the needs of young students in our school system are met. These programs include the county's 17 elementary schools, early childhood education such as pre-K kindergarten, Head Start, and the Judy Center, whose purposes are to ensure that children are socially, emotionally, and physically prepared to enter their learning environment.
A Tootie Ta, a Tootie Ta, a Tootie Ta Ta. A Tootie Ta, a Tootie Ta, a Tootie Ta Ta. Thumbs up. A Tootie Ta, a Tootie Ta, a Tootie Ta Ta. A Tootie Ta, a Tootie Ta, a Tootie Ta Ta. Thumbs up. Arms back. A Tootie Ta, a Tootie Ta, a Tootie Ta Ta. A Tootie Ta, a Tootie Ta, a Tootie Ta Ta. Thumbs up. Arms back. Feet apart.
The St. Mary's County Public School System recognizes the value of early learning experiences and is dedicated to providing comprehensive and early learning services for children and their families to ensure that our students will be successful in their education and life. For more information about these early childhood programs, visit the St. Mary's County Public Schools website at smcbs.org.
Dr. Marderano, if you would join us, we have a proclamation for the month of the milita, month of the young child as well, and we have a few special guests that we would like to highlight and have them walk the red carpet. And first, I'm gonna ask Mrs. Sherry Sierra. She is a pre-kindergarten teacher at Piney Point, an exceptional experienced teacher, and also one of the co-leaders of our new pre-kindergarten professional learning community. So please come on up. We have her stellar principal of Piney Point, Mrs. Audrey Ellis. Please walk the carpet. And we also have joining us a major partner in the public library, and we have the assistant director of the public library systems, Ms. Mary Ann Bowman. And then Dr. Marderano will share the proclamation.
Okay, thank you. So let me acknowledge the individuals up front, our representatives from our early childhood, and acknowledge that the partnership that we have at the library, I think one of our goals is to ensure that every child has a library card, and we start early, don't we? You know, through the pre-K years and ensure getting that whole aspect of indoctrination and socializing what is the importance of the library and all the programs to start. The only problem with today's presentation thus far is you showed that Tootie Ta song. I will be singing that all day long. Thumbs up, arms back, I mean, that will be in my head the rest of the day, so if you hear me singing Tootie Ta all day, you'll know why. That's a wonderful song, and it's great in terms of motor skills as well. So board members, it's absolutely wonderful to be able to acknowledge the month of the young child. April has been designated as the month of the young child, and whereas the importance of children's earliest years in shaping their learning and development is acknowledged, and whereas we recognize that building better futures for all children is a community responsibility, and recommit ourselves to ensuring that each and every child experiences a type of early environment at home, at school, at childcare, and in the community that will promote their early learning. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of St. Mary's County endorses the observance of the month of the military, of the month of the military, the month of the young child as the opportunity to join other government agencies, community-based organizations, service groups, and private citizens in committing to ensuring that every young child in St. Mary's County has the best possible earning, early childhood experience and lives in a community that values and supports each child and family. Signed by the Board of Education members sitting at the dais and myself on this day, the ninth of April. Congratulations. We'll have to give that to you as well. Give them a round of applause as representatives. And also they get a copy of the DVD. But what I also want to acknowledge is the work of Cindy Kilcoyne, Kelly Hall, all the individuals in our school system, our principals, our teachers at the early level, because if you take a look, if you would just slip to your right a little bit, we have our vision in terms of what our expectations are. One of the major points of our vision plan for the school district is the focus on early interventions, early childhood interventions, making certain that we open up more opportunities for pre-K, for Head Start, as you know, this year that we've been recipient of that large grant that allows us to have a Head Start program. So our philosophy as a school system is to engage young people at the earliest stage possible to start hitting that gap in terms of learning and making certain all young people are successful. If you follow the goals forward further, the expectation is that we want all young people reading by grade three. And so those early interventions, it's all about literacy, it's all about numeracy, it's all about ensuring that children have those skills necessary when the curriculum becomes more difficult, that they can navigate with a level of independence moving through the process. It ultimately yields the student sitting on the board member who will, as a student board member, who will graduate from Chopticon High School successfully the end of May. So we want to see that whole process move forward in a way that every child is successful, and as we think with the end in mind, we want every child graduating from high school. You've heard the conversations that I've had with you, that principals have had with you, that your supervisors have had with you, that the graduation rate does not just start in high school, it starts with our early interventions. And looking at what those at-risk factors are for students who then get off the center rail, who may want to drop out, what are those factors that we have to do to keep them in place? And it all starts with the early interventions. Our partnerships with the library are tremendous, our partnerships in terms of community in general, but all of us working together, as stated, so goes the school system, so goes the community, and so goes the community, so goes the school system. I say that because all of us have a vested interest in the success of our young people. More children with literacy and numeracy skills, more students graduating ensures the whole aspect of overall community. So on behalf of the school system, the school board, let's give them a round of applause one more time. So thank you very much. Would you like to say anything? No.
No, I'd like to say...
Come on, just come on.
All I would like to say is that I feel truly blessed to be able to get up every morning and go to Piney Point Elementary School. I'm fortunate to have an amazing group of people to work with, not only at Piney Point, but within the whole St. Mary's County system, and I still love it, 22 years, still love it.
And I've been in your room numerous times, and while you manage a very well-managed room, very clear with structure and order and routine, it's just absolutely heartwarming to see that occurring all through our district because it sets that foundational piece. We applaud your efforts. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Very good. Sit around.
All right. Mrs. Hall, thank you very much. Mrs. Kilcoyne, thank you. After the environmental education month recognition, we'll have some picture taken, so people, please bear with us for a few more minutes. Environmental Education Month, Margarita.
Rocco.
Rocco?
Rocco. Yes. I'm doing well, thanks. Happy Environmental Education Month to you, Dr. Raspa. I just realized this is going to be your last environmental ed month on the board.
Don't say that.
Thank you for all your support for environmental ed throughout the years. So every year, we join the governor in proclaiming April as Environmental Education Month in Maryland, and as the Sunday Celebration of Earth Day on Leonardtown Square, we'll show members of our community are eager to educate as well as to seek deeper understanding of the ever-fascinating world of our environment. On April 1st, we started the month with Fairlead Academy, with performing a student service learning project down at the Elms. They learned about the ecological value of native plants in landscaping, and they conducted several spring nursery tasks. They were joined later in the morning by kindergarten students, early childhood kids from Leonardtown Elementary School studying shoreline creatures along the Chesapeake Bay, and they lucked out because the Fairlead kids had a break in between hauling mulch in the wagons. They got to take a little wagon ride, so that was good for everybody. We continued the week with Esperanza 7th graders inaugurating the service learning program in the nursery. All of the efforts of all the 7th grade students in the county helped produce native plants that are available free to all schools and all community groups, nonprofit groups, for restoration of native habitats and turning landscaping into native plantings. And Chopticon and Great Mills Environmental Science classes came to Soderly. They did water quality testing. Were you there?
I wasn't.
You heard about darn sorry. It was a little chilly, but they made it, they made it work. They did water quality testing and did habitat assessments of the aquatic environment. And then this week, finally, we started up our spring second grade program at Soderly. Kids are studying insects, and the second grade class that came from Evergreen actually saw a huge owl in the woods on the trail. It was really pretty cool in the middle of the day, and 5th graders started their canoeing program. So we're all moving ahead, and the month is only nine days old. So I'd like to encourage that our, everyone in our community, especially those of us that spend a lot of time indoors for our professions and responsibilities, to get outside, open a door, step out, and be open to the quiet gifts of the natural world. And I know Ms. Sierra does that all the time with her classes, and please try to do this whether it's sunny out or raining or even snowing, if I'm allowed to say that word anymore.
No, really?
No, okay. Well, give the natural world a chance to touch your heart, maybe, maybe every month on the ninth of the month, and when you have a chance, take a child with you, a child of any age, because we can never protect, we'll never want to protect, things that we don't love. So get out there and give it a minute. Thanks a lot for everybody's support, and try to do something outside and hereby proclaim.
Exactly. So let's go present that.
All right. So I'd like to present to you, Dr. Marderano, with this proclamation, whereas Maryland is America in miniature from the rugged western Maryland to the Baltimore-Washington corridor and from the Chesapeake Bay to the farmlands of the eastern shore, whereas environmental education embraces appreciation of the natural world, knowledge of science, geography, history, economics, and government, understanding of the wise use of the world's and Maryland's natural resources, and the development of positive attitudes and skills necessary to participate responsibly in environmental decision-making and problem-solving. And whereas environmental ed includes the interdisciplinary understanding of local, state, regional, national, and global environmental issues, including air, water, soil quality, human health, biodiversity, the Chesapeake Bay watershed, habitat protection and restoration, land use, energy waste management, and environmental health and justice, whereas exploration enjoyment of the outdoors, both as part of a formal environmental ed program as well as a recreational unstructured activity, is critical to developing the necessary understanding and appreciation of our natural resources. And whereas environmental ed continues to gain support from individuals, citizens, schools, higher ed, nonprofit, local, state, and government, federal, and federal agencies, and community enterprises, as we face new and challenging environmental, changing environmental challenges, including the restoration of our beloved Chesapeake Bay.
Thank you very much. Board members, I'm honored to accept this on your behalf and recognizing, you know, the importance of this month and the importance significantly for St. Mary's County, recognizing that we are in the bull's eye of the watershed, you know, and when you think about it, with the mighty Potomac and the Potuxent River to the left and right of us being this peninsula that has incredible natural resources, beauty, environment, et cetera, in terms of why we need to protect it. The piece of it, the piece for us is the education so our young people understand the importance of the beauty that's around us and the importance of preserving that throughout, and I think we can all cite examples of things that we've seen here. The other day, an eagle flew over, the Osprey are back, I mean, all those things occurring. The day that was raining, literally a blue heron was walking across the road. I mean, these are wonderful things to see and take into account. Every now and then, a wild turkey will emerge. I've got a turkey caller that I try to call them out. I mean, hearing owls in the morning, being in tune to the environment and being able to turn that in to an educational opportunity for our young people, values the importance in the work that you do is absolutely phenomenal at the Elms. The opportunities that our children have because of those natural resources, our goal is to leverage those natural resources and opportunities so our young people will have that great appreciation. So thank you for your work. It's an honor to accept this, and now if you would join us in a picture, we'd appreciate that as well. So thank you, board members.
Dr. Raspa, could I make a comment?
Yeah. Go ahead, Peter.
Ms. Rocco didn't mention this, but I moved into the county in 4th grade, and Ms. Rocco was my 4th grade teacher, actually, at Oakville Elementary. And she was, she was my first teacher, my first contact when I moved in, and of course I was really nervous, as anyone, any other student would be. And to this day, I remember almost back eight years ago, when, when I, we started when a couple of months, probably was April, actually, Ms. Rocco took us out, outside of the school every single day, and we had a garden outside, and I remember to the day, we planted black-eyed suz and ginger poway plants. And we would go out there every day, right, right before lunch, and go out there, and it was, it was really interesting to see everyone. It was a whole-class activity of us going out there, tending to the weeds, watering the plants, planting the seeds, and watching it grow. And by the end of the year, by the time it was time for us to move up to 5th grade, the garden and the plants had grown, and we'd come back the next year, and I believe the next 4th graders picked it up again. And that was something that I and my peers remember to this day, that we went out and planted and did plants, and some, some of us had never done that before, and none knew that it was so much hard work to tend to that garden and make sure that it drove and it thrived. And I believe that year is when Oakville Elementary became a green school.
Yeah, that's wonderful.
And we went to Soderly Plantation Elms and had a lot of field trips and everything as well, and that was just an eye-opening thing for us students, and something that I still remember and why we hold, we should hold environmental education today. So thank, I want to thank you for that.
So what he's saying is you're responsible for him from sitting at the board chair right now.
He did a great thing.
That's excellent, Peter. Thank you.
Thank you very much for all you do, and our environmental center is doing very well, and I know you and your staff and other people support it and work very, very hard. I too enjoy this. I don't have any turkeys at my house, but between the raccoons and the possums and the squirrels and all the birds and the hawks, we have a great time. Thank you very, very much. We're gonna take a break at this time, and Dr. Marderano will have some pictures taken.
Absolutely. So let's start with Margarita.
Madam Secretary, are there any public comments?
Yes.
Ladies and gentlemen, just bear with me while I read the public comments statement. The Board welcomes public input on policies and issues affecting our schools. The Board takes this time to listen and consider but not to comment. This is not, however, the appropriate forum for negative comments or criticisms of individual staff or students. Concerns about individual staff members that cannot be resolved at the level closest to the situation should be directed to the superintendent. This Board will not permit comments criticizing individual staff or students since this is outside the scope of public comment. Additionally, the Board sits as an appellate body in both student and employee appeals. The Board cannot comment on or have prior knowledge of a case that would influence their ability to deliberate. To maintain the ability of the Board to render a fair and unbiased decision, comments regarding individual student or personnel issues cannot be presented at public comment. Speakers must sign in at the beginning of the meeting. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker, and speakers may not yield their time to someone else. time to someone else. The Board encourages speakers to present written statements to the Board Secretary, who will distribute copies to all Board members. Madam Secretary?
Terry Geist and Tracy Chandler.
Morning.
I am Terry Geist, and I'm the President of the Autism Spectrum Support Group of Southern Maryland, just this much shy of getting its nonprofit status.
And I am Tracy Chandler. I'm the Vice President of the Support Group.
We appreciated hearing the proclamations made today about the Month of the Military Child, the Month of the Young Child, and Environmental Education Month. We're here today to bring to your attention that April is Autism Awareness Month. Our President, Barack Obama, declared April 2nd, 2014 to be World Autism Awareness Day. In his proclamation, he emphasized, excuse me, that Americans with autism contribute to all aspects of society and are an essential thread in the diverse tapestry of our nation. President Obama went on to say, because our whole nation benefits when Americans with autism succeed, we must ensure our healthcare and education systems work for them. He continued, my administration remains committed to eliminating discrimination against students with autism and to giving schools the resources to help them hone unique talents, overcome difficult challenges, and prepare for bright futures.
These sentiments hold true during Autism Awareness Month. This year, it's particularly important to recognize April as Autism Awareness Month, as the CDC has just released its most recent statistics on the prevalence of autism spectrum disorders. And, you know, it takes them a while to get things done, so these are numbers from about 2012, 2012, I believe. The numbers are just staggering. One in 68 children are estimated to have a form of autism, and the breakdown by gender is extremely frightening. The estimate for girls is one in 189, but for boys, that number has increased to one in 42. I mean, just, just think about that. What is happening to our children? But what is happening to our little boys? And how is that going to affect our society? Regardless of the reasons for this increase, our society must address the challenges that come with autism spectrum disorders. In St. Mary's County, we estimate that of the 18,000 students in our school system, that would be approximately 265 have some form of autism. And that alarming rate doesn't even include the number of children attending private and parochial schools, or those who are home-schooled in the county. So our job now is to promote autism awareness, as well as autism acceptance, as we support the children and the families that are impacted by this disorder. And as President Obama stated, let us celebrate our differences, but let us also acknowledge our responsibilities to each other and move forward as one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you very much for coming today.
That's all.
All right. Thank you very much. Moving on to the consent agenda, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda is presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Everyone in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The ayes have it. There are no action items today. We'll move right into information items. First information item is the FY 2014 budgetary issues and the FY 2015 impacts. Mr. Norris and Dr. Marterana.
So, good afternoon, or morning, board members. It's pushing that afternoon along, I guess, a little quickly. So we were trying to move through the agenda in terms of our recognitions in a, in a very rapid way to give the recognition where it was necessary. And I appreciate the individuals here today, some great partners as well, recognizing autistic awareness month as well. So what we need to make certain is that I'm presenting today some issues with our current budget, our current budget. So I want to be very clear and frame this, and I want to tell some stories, make some examples, and make sure people understand the variables which I'm talking about. So when I talk about fiscal year 14, that is the current operating budget that ends the end of June. Fiscal year 15 is the budget that we are going through the process to develop. And so, as you know, our Chief Financial Officer and our Deputy Financial Officer, Tammy McCourt and Greg Norris, manage our finances daily, keep track of all of our expenditures, and then also alert through various projections where we will end up. And so the normal process is going through what we define as a categorical transfer. You set up with an established budget amount, you put it into categories. If you overexpend in areas, adjustments need to be made. If you underspend in areas, adjustments need to be made. And at the end, we have to have a balanced budget. And through the process of categorical transfers, we do that through the normal process with the Board, as well as with the Board of County Commissioners. So this year, before I even get into the details, has been extremely demanding. It has been extremely demanding. It is what I would define as either an aberration, or hopefully not the new normal, in that sense. It has been a challenging year in the sense that we have been hit with additional cold weather, which has had a bearing in regards to our fuel and energy and our electric. We've also had the issues of snow. As I told you, our school system was disrupted 24 days throughout this school year for weather-related events. That has increased our level of need to have snow removed, in terms of our budget. As we're talking about the awareness of autism, we need to recognize that as a school system, that we are a growing school system, and that we have children who come into the school system after we make our initial projections and our planning for our services that are needed, and individuals continue to come into the school system that have needs, individuals that have IEPs, individuals that are showing an increased level of students who are having autism, who need those supports. We do not have the ability by law to say, because we didn't budget for that, we can't provide the services. By law, we must provide services contained in the individual educational plan, better known as the IEP. And so, once the budget is established, our only recourse to provide staffing support is through contracted services. And we've seen an increased level of students presenting themselves to the school system who have additional needs that have to be provided with those direct services as a result of presenting themselves with IEPs. Additionally, the, one of the major cost elements of our overall budget, and when there's conversations about our budget, $190 million is a lot of money in terms of a school system operation. We recognize that. We recognize where our funding sources come from, from the state, from the local, and from the federal. A small portion comes from the federal allocation. We make our projections in terms of our salaries, negotiations, all of those. We build a budget and then go through the processes we're going through right now for 15. And in the current year, we made those same projections. But there are variables in there that can't always be controlled. And as I'm talking about this year, another what I define as an aberration, or is it the new normal? 80% of our budget, 80 to 85% of our budget is designated to personnel, to salaries, to benefits, et cetera, fringes that go along with that. Another 10%, we deal with the energy, the fuel, the fuel for our buses, et cetera. 5% is defined as the dollars designated for the services for our young people regarding curriculum. So when I put those in those three buckets, there's not a lot of discretion regarding the, the must-haves. We're a people organization. We have a certain number of employees. We pay them a salary for the services they render. They provide, we provide benefits for them, and in turn, we have to budget for that. Same thing regarding fuel, oil, and energy, et cetera. So what I need to start with is a very basic understanding for the community in regards to our healthcare. Let me define for the community, as well as for everybody in attendance, as well as for all of you which you know this, that we are self-insured. We are a self-insured school system in the sense of providing healthcare. So what does that mean to the basic person who doesn't have a full understanding of healthcare? What that means is that we provide healthcare and we pay for it, coming and going, directly and indirectly, left and right. So we have an 80/20 split, for example. 20% of a premium is paid for by the employees. That's a bucket where the funding comes from, for the overall healthcare bucket, which is over $30 million. The 80% of the 20% of that $30 million, the school system pays for. The school system pays. And it's not back when, you know, if you don't understand, that, well, that doesn't matter. The insurance company pays for that. No. The school system pays for the 80% out of that $30 million plus dollars in that sense, the sense of self-insured. And so, when we have our provider, which is Care First, they are our administrator. They are the ones who administer our healthcare. So that on a weekly basis, we take in our bills, present the bills to Care First, and they pay the bills. So when you're making your projections, you hope all of that goes at the level which you expect it to, and you monitor that throughout. But what we can't control are the variables of humans. Individuals who have increased level of illness, increased level of medical needs and medical issues, increased levels of prescription medication, and also then an increased level of enrollment. So this year, it seems like, you know, without using the overly dramatized and overused analogies, the perfect storm is one that's been used in the past. The confluence of events have emerged this year with the colder weather, with the increased level of students needing special education services, the need for our fuel and energy issues, snow removal, and an increased level of healthcare usage during this budget cycle. So what I want to do is get into some of the specifics so you understand that, and how we're going to mitigate in the current fiscal year to address those concerns that have a bearing on the overall school system. And what, what you need to tend to in all of this is the fact that you have to look at 14 and 15 in tandem. Because I'm looking now, making projections into 15, as well as 16, to see what those bearings are and what our needs are based upon that as we move through the process. So I've talked about that. I've talked about those issues already. But I want to give you some specifics regarding this. So for example, what you need to understand is that we have subscribers and we have members. Individuals who are our employees are the actual subscriber. We have over 2,000, 2,400 subscribers. And you have to realize that we are womb to tomb. That we have individuals in the early stage, and our demographic is we're a predominantly school system, that is an 80/20 split with our demographics, predominantly young women, 80% female in our organization, 20% male. We hire a lot of young teachers. There's a lot of issues that go along with healthcare issues early on in life, pregnancies, maternity, young children, et cetera. Life progresses. You hope that individuals are going to be healthy, individuals living longer. People need hip replacements, knee replacements, a variety of other health factors. And we provide other post-employment benefits. We provide healthcare to our retirees at a different level of split. So there's a different set of medical issues of individuals who are middle-aged and senior citizens, in terms of what presents itself there as well. So we have over 2,400 subscribers, but then the members are all the dependents, the spouses, the children, to the tune of 5,014 members who are on our rolls that we provide healthcare for. This year, we've had over 279 additional new members added to the rolls after our projections were made. Increased of 77 employees who made calculated decisions, it's not 77 additional employees, but calculated decisions of 77 additional employees who either employed by us or new, who made the decision to join our healthcare plan. People are very savvy balancing it out between their spouses or other plans that they have, and benefiting in terms of what's best for their family. We've had an increase of 77 employees that yielded 279 new members to the cost of close to $1 million. We've had an increased level of prescription usage this year, to the tune that 75% of our prescription cost is for brand drugs, to the tune of almost $2 million additional usage of prescription medications this year than what was originally calculated based upon past years. We've had more high-dollar claims this year, which defined in some circles as catastrophic illnesses, so million-dollar claims, that we've had some individuals in our school district who have, have had some severe needs, have some severe medical issues, and to the tune of 500,000. Now specifically, when we reach a million-dollar claim, we have another policy that also assists us in providing that coverage, because many of those have a great concern to the business aspect of the budget in regards to that. We also have made some adjustments in the past by re-establishing and renegotiating the different healthcare benefits that were different healthcare options that we provide, that were going to be cost savings. And during that time, we yielded some savings by going to PPNs and HMOs versus the primary provider. And that resulted in a savings which we thought would offset a particular increase two years ago, which intentionality should have gone back and made an increase, but because of the savings that we were yielding, thought that that would balance out. And we didn't want to raise the rates so much for our employees that it would take away from the realized dollars in terms of the raises that they had received. But again, that would not have been enough to cover the shortfall of where we are right now. I need to get into the level of specifics. One of the challenges is that we have a total number of prescriptions have increased by the number of fills that I've said, 1,229. Brand fills increased by 1,380, while generics have decreased by 151. And so, my next slide, we'll talk a little bit more about that. The aspect, direct, self-insured, our prescription co-pay is one of the lowest around. Its generic is $5, and the brand is $10. And so, we've seen an increased level of people using brand medications as opposed to generic. And obviously, the brand is more expensive regarding that. But that's the deal in place right now. I want to explain this in more detail so that you understand. And so, community understands the reality when we talk about healthcare. This is something that everybody in America can relate to right now. You turn on, no matter what cable station you listen to, there's conversations about it. I talk in terms of it as sustainability. How can we sustain the benefits provided to employees while balancing the great need in terms of our instructional program? But it's a benefit that we provide, and what we need to do, working collectively with our associations to manage those costs, et cetera. So what I asked for recently was a call for data in terms of just prescription drugs that are used within our school district. This does not represent the overall picture, but I think it's important. Because I don't think people understand the overall cost of medication and the cost that it has for us. For example, these are the, a lot of the prescription medications I'm showing, these are things that you oftentimes see on TV. Crestor, Humira, Nexium, Embrel, Cymbalta, Advair, Celebrex, Revlimid. Crevstar is for cholesterol. Humira is for anti-inflammatory. Nexium is stomach acid. Embrel, psoriasis. Cymbalta, fibromyalgia. Advair for asthma. Celebrex, anti-inflammatory. And Revlimid is an anemia/cancer drug. So for example, Crestor, brand name drug, to fill that prescription for a 30-day supply costs $417. The employee pays 10, who pays the rest, the school system, in terms of the 80% is self-insured, to the total of $331,380. Now, I can give you this data every year, because that's a part of it. I go down through to talk to you about I go down through to talk to you about Humira, and it's not, there's not a mistake on there. The decimal point is where it needs to be. There's not a, the decimal point is where it needs to be. It's an anti-inflammatory and it is four thousand, two hundred and seventy-three dollars. So I put those up as examples. And then going down to the fact of a cancer drug is seven thousand, seven hundred and nine dollars, to give you a frame of reference for what prescriptions cost. Because we say, we provide healthcare, we provide costs for coverage for medical interventions, surgeries, prescriptions, but it has a cost. So I keep my empathy hat on always, but I have to keep my business hat on as well in the sense of managing this. And this has been what I hope is an aberration this year in the sense of an increased level, but also we need to do a better job of educating the distinction between generic versus brand. And I think there's a psychological impact that people naturally migrate in when you make, when people shop, they think that Kellogg's may be better than Shorfine. Because you see it on TV, you're inundated. Really, if you look at the breakdown of the ingredients and the makeup, there's no distinction. But we've been conditioned to say that that brand is better. It's that whole Madison Avenue at its best inundating you with advertising that says, and all of these, I said this for intentionality, all of these medications have been on TV. You probably know all of these because of the fact you've seen them on TV because they run those commercials strategically at a time when the demographic who is in need of those medications is watching it. And they're saying, they're in the business of making money, marketing aspect, but we need to do a better job, as we've had conversations with our association yesterday, of informing our employees to make better consumer decisions, to be more informed about the generic versus the overall brand. So I bring that to your attention. So all of these have created this confluence of events that to the tune right now of anywhere between four and five million dollars, and we're doing this with a level of precision, it's creating a shortfall, all the events that we've said in our current budget. So when this begins to be realized, which we started knowing about this the end of February because the statements, as Greg will present as well, you know, where we are with our bubbles in the county, it starts emerging now. And then we still have April, May, and June. Now, here's where I become my, the consummate teacher. There is a concept called Bader Minehoff. And probably thinking, what's he talking about now? Bader Minehoff is a psychological effect that goes like this. When you buy a new car, all of a sudden, you see everybody else has that same car on the road. Is it because there are more of those cars on the road? No. It's because your awareness has been raised to the fact that that's something that's caught in your mind. Well, I'm being affected by the Bader Minehoff effect myself because I've always wanted to keep my empathy hat on, not my business hat. But in the last two weeks, seven employees have informed me that they need to be out for major surgeries. Keeping my empathy hat on, but also my business hat on, the awareness issue. They're entitled to that, but it also has a cost for the school system in the next several months. So we are handling this internally right now in the sense that I've put a freeze on all hiring positions. And that means all, any position that needs to be advanced as a critical need position is being approved through my leadership team directly to me. We are evaluating temporary positions and eliminating all non-essential positions, and we've started that action already. My cabinet and leadership team is reviewing all requisitions and approving only emergency designations and reviewing all of our accounts and putting a freeze on those as well. We are looking at what is called please pays, which are accounts that we have with businesses that then we go and we get the bill and then submit it for payment. That needs to be authorized in advance. Already, we've diminished the school system down to the basic essence in terms of conference attendance, et cetera. But I want people to be aware that although there's minimal of that activity occurring, I've curtailed all of it unless it is grant-funded and pre-approved for cabinet that has a direct bearing in terms of improving the needs of services within our school district. That's already occurring because I've really narrowed that category down. I'm not a real big advocate in that arena that people need to go out for conferences just for the sake of going to them. We can provide that PD internally. Minimize all overtime, use board vehicles for travel in and out of county, and minimize travel reimbursements, reimbursements, and encourage the use of technology, Skyping and conference calls, et cetera, to advance the efficiencies that we need to advance within our school system. And then I put down for the last and final bullet is all of these things, again, talking with our association, and we met for two and a half hours yesterday, both ESMIC, SESMIC, and SMAS to convene them, to reconvene our healthcare committee to discuss healthcare savings to include co-pays and pharmaceutical plans as well. The representatives are associations, unions know the cost of this as well. And I want to double back around so I can give you a more composite picture of things. So I talked to you about for every action, there's an equal and opposite reaction. So by virtue of a policy change of that twenty-two to twenty-six-year-old, so by virtue of increasing to allow young people to remain on their parents' policy up to age twenty-six, may sound good on paper, but board members, you need to make the constant conversation and comment, but not without a cost. I told you of our increase, a hundred and seventy individuals are in that category, twenty-three to twenty-six-year-old. Before that was enacted, that was a hundred and seventy less individuals. And people, and rightly so, we all make good decisions based upon our own plans and spouses and different things. But I had a conversation recently with a school system employee, and I think my awareness through the Bader Minehoff effect was raised by it, was the fact that child just graduated from college has a really good job, but the cost for healthcare is preventing him from having rent and doing other things and paying off loans, where they strategize to say, well, you can remain on our healthcare plan for the next three years while you pay off your loans, management of money, while you do that. But that was not the intention. But people, there's nothing that says you can't do that. But people are making good family decisions about it. I'm sharing with you all of this to say, these are the variables that we're confronted with as we are self-insured. So there's been more claims filed, there has been more use of prescription medication administered, there has been a variety of issues, and balancing that out with how much do we raise the rates on our employees? So as I dovetail this, board members, we're doing what we need to do. I'm informing you, obviously, we've been talking about this for the last several months. We will be continuing to talk, you know, through this as we get to the end of the year and do everything that we can to mitigate internally. Also want to recognize that all of this has a bearing in terms of 2015. Our next board meeting is on April thirtieth. At that time, I am proposing that we have a budget hearing, or excuse me, a budget workshop where we can talk further about what needs to occur in fifteen. So I just sort of throw that out, that what we're dealing with also is fifteen. When I said that we needed a certain amount of dollars at a very basic level, that was a large amount of money increase. But when I said twelve million dollars, that took into account monies to negotiate with our labor unions, monies to address healthcare issues and increases, needs in terms of opening up new schools and additional staffing and programs. And I'm thankful that the funding has come through from the state that is a lagging indicator that has realized the growth, because the growth that we have today will not translate to dollars from the state calculated in that enrollment discussion until one to two years later. It's a lagging data point. The realized dollars that we're getting now from the state increase as is a result of the enrollment from the last two years. So there is some silver lining to our growth is because the formula, it's a formula-driven allocation from the state, and so that realizes in that formula, growth and need, et cetera. The federal impact aid remains relatively flat. That federal contribution is a small portion of our budget, it remains relatively flat. So the other allocation is the third prong of that, is the allocation from the county. And then we get into the conversation about maintenance of effort, which basically says in a nutshell that school systems cannot be funded at any less level than what they currently were in the current fiscal year. But that doesn't take into account inflationary factors, increases in fuel, energy, et cetera. But what it does take into account is growth. So the county addressing the issues with the teacher pension, which we're very thankful for, the issues with OPEB at a very robust level, I might add, you know, in that sense, because that's for other post-employment benefits. When you provide benefits for retirees, that is developing another trust fund to sustain that down the road because it addresses everything I'm talking about here. And then the aspect of maintenance of effort. So the county has provided four million additional dollars for the school system that is one million for the adjustment for growth and the three million above maintenance of effort, in addition to contributions for teacher pension and OPEB and other things like that as well. We'll get into more of that in detail, and we've already talked about that, but I have to bring these together. So as we recalibrate the fifteen budget, obviously, there is a certain amount that we said we needed, and that was cut down to what then the allocation is in terms of our revenues. So what we're doing right now is paring that all down. How do we get to a bottom-line number? Once you add in, and another word that I want everybody to understand, is incremental increases. Incremental increases are that one paragraph in my budget in brief to you that is the most important paragraph in the overall budget. Because I always try to make analogies and tie things back in. It's like, you know, when we do the school calendar, it's a relatively easy process because once you put all your must-haves in, everything else takes care of itself. The budgeting process is not anywhere shaped in terms of easy or that level of specificity in terms of ease. It's more complicated and more protracted. But once you put in your must-haves, then anything that's left in the balance, you have to divide that up for increases in programs or the level of advocacy for additional funds to make a case for that. And that's what our associations do in terms of their advocacy, making the case for a need, what we do in terms of our needs for the school system, we have to educate people. But incremental increases, go back to what I've talked about here, energy and fuel, special education, contracted services, issues with healthcare, and those lists continue and are clearly articulated in the budget. Those are things I can't just say, hey, just eliminate that for this year because it'll come home to roost. Those are must-haves. We have to pay the bills to keep the electric on. We have to pay the fuel bills to transport our young people. We have to. So the basic elements of safety, providing staffing to do that, maintaining your class size ratios, all of those things create this confluence of events for me on a daily basis with our team to manage all of this in the one fiscal year that advances to the next year. So we have to make some structural adjustments, obviously, as we are looking at the either new normal for healthcare, hopefully that this was an anomaly for snow, et cetera. I tried not to use that word because it seems to be jinxing in that sense, but to make those adjustments. So then the next thing is I will be prepared with staff to go with you next week to the budget hearing. And as it looks right now with what we have to cut in the must-haves, we've had to take out things such as the allocation for the tech books, the advancement of all the staff positions necessary that we put in for an advance. But the one, three that I have to hang on to after cutting all this are the three mid-year positions needed to open the new school. Because we're opening a new school in fiscal year, or I should say, calendar year fifteen, fiscal year sixteen, which is not current budget, not this budget, but the next one I've got to look down to, and then make that adjustment accordingly. So, but we have to do all the planning ahead of time. So the principal, the principal secretary, the building service staff manager has to be in place mid-year, and we're adjusting staffing plans accordingly. I'm very concerned right now, as I've shared with our associations, there's no realized dollars in the budget right now for negotiations. As it stands, in fifteen, there are no dollars. There has been conversation in all aspects of the community regarding parity between county government employees and school system employees. The school, county government employees have received, I think the placeholder is a step dollars in there for a step increase next year. And I would like to espouse that same consideration for our employees as well. But as I stated to you, that, and again, I do this with my due diligence as a teacher, is that a factor of one percent COLA increase for our school system translates to one point one new dollars that adds to the base that's recurring. A step increase for our employees translates to one point nine million dollars to realize that. That's a factor. So when individuals are talking, as I stated in my budget presentation, is a factor. One percent, one point one. One step, one point nine. Two steps, two percent, two point two, and so on and so on. So the current budget, as I'm going to present to you further through adjustments, April thirtieth, and recognize we're on a more compressed schedule now with what has to occur with the approval, the calendar that's been set by the county, we're working through all of that. But I have to kind of move forward with the budget hearing before I've come to you, you know, and talk to you about where we're cutting to get to that level. So we'll move through that process. We're appreciative of the additional funding that's occurred. But also, we have some structural adjustments that need to be made with some of the must-haves that are causing the school system issues with sustainability. And this is not a new concept. We've gone ups and downs with this when our total allocation for our healthcare is over thirty million dollars in regards to it. So I tied all that together with you. What I've tried to do in summary is let you know where we currently are, how I have directed staff to mitigate in this fiscal year, and with an eye to the future with a long-range consideration for FY fifteen. Because I have to do two things by law with you. I have to present you with a closeout budget for fourteen that's balanced. Case in point, all the aspects of the dates, categorical transfers that need to occur, and that goes within the normal process of budget management. And then I have to develop a budget for you that you approve that becomes your budget that defines all of the expectations and issues that need to be encumbered in FY fifteen that is balanced based upon the revenues. See, we just can't run, you know, a deficit and kick the can down the road. You know, my sort of editorial is if all budgets were run like that, I think we would better, be better off, you know, as a society in that sense. But the local impact, and I'm an advocate for it, it's a must-have in terms of being fiscally conservative, that you balance that budget and you don't use non-recurring dollars, one-time monies to offset recurring dollars in the future, you have to strategize, et cetera. And another variable that I put on the table is that through some conversations and arrangements, our fund balance is our fund balance is absolutely small in comparison to the overall budget. And I'm going to end with that piece and then open it up for questions, is that a budget, a government budget, government agency budget, that is to the tune of 190 million dollars, like ours. CPAs will tell you, or accountants will tell you, that rainy day fund, reserves, you should have approximately, with actuarial kind of outlook, 5% of that budget should be in reserves. So, do your quick math. As a math teacher, what's 5% of 190 million dollars? 8.5 million dollars. That's a recommendation to deal with issues such as this sways and swings and fluctuations. But we have managed every dollar very efficiently, and we've boiled that fund balance down to basically right now, less than a million. And then, designated in reserves is a million-dollar designated fund balance to cover any adjustments for healthcare. We're going to utilize both of those as we mitigate. But as we advance the school system, one of the things at which we are at risk for, which causes me a concern, is not having the fund balance at a reasonable level to manage internal fluctuations from a business point of view. I'm not saying that that should be five, or 10, or 20. It should be reasonable. It shouldn't be a million, but we've taken it to that level. Because I like to go, and as I define the way we operate the school system, people bring problems to me all day long, but I ask individuals to bring three solutions to every problem. Think with us. So, I like to espouse that same philosophical belief that when we have a problem, I like to go with a solution in hand to solve it. And the, taking the fund balance down to lower levels creates less latitude when you have things such as unreasonably cold winters, fluctuations in your energy, all of those things. And we're putting into place savings measures, et cetera, and it still doesn't cover them. And then, the biggest dog in the arena is the healthcare issues. So, I'm bringing this to you early in terms of three-fourths of the way through the fiscal year to say the bell was beginning to ring, and I've brought this up to you over the last couple of months, the bell was beginning to ring. I've been talking about it in public. I spoke, I speak often in public to various groups. And community gets it because they're, everybody's balancing their own healthcare issue. And I keep saying, and one last thing, one last thing, there's never a last thing for me, it's continual, is that lots of conversation about the ACA, the Affordable Care Act. And I, regardless of what your impressions are of that, it is what it is. But there is a $63 administrative fee provided to government agencies for every member who has healthcare to help manage that process. I'm not sure everybody is aware of that. I'm convinced that not all boards of education are because Mrs. Allen's had this conversation with her colleagues in Annapolis. But just do your basic math. I told you, how many members do we have?
5,014.
Exactly. Times 63, that's over three, that's approximately $325,000 next year that has to be budgeted for to cover the administrative fee of the ACA. So, for all these things that sound good on policy, and I'm not advocating either way, it's, all politics is local. Any change that is made in Annapolis as an unfunded mandate comes back home to be addressed. Anything that occurs at the federal level in terms of policy adjustments comes back home to the local level unless there is a funding stream attached to it. And the majority of time, there is not. And so, with an already stretched budget, and I know when I say that, people are going, he's got 190 million dollars. But we're a large school system, ladies and gentlemen. Anything over 15,000 young people is defined as a large school system. And we're growing. And it takes those dollars to add a new school, to maintain certain level of progress, maintain graduation levels, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, for every action, there's an equal and opposite reaction. When one of those pressure points comes home, it comes home to roost at the expense of something else. So, that $325,000 that I've talked about for the administrative fee for ACA has a consideration for us in next year's budget in FY 15. So, I'm going to come up for air now. It's 11:24. I'm going to go to the questions, and I'm going to have, be surrounded by Tammy and, Tammy McCourt and Greg Norris and other staff members, if I may not be able to answer any questions too. But you can tell at the level of detail of where we are based upon this, I didn't even really need to have that PowerPoint in front of me because the story tells itself once you're living it all day long. So, Dr. Raspe, back to you, sir.
Thank you very much, Dr. Mordarano. Board members, questions or comments? Mrs. Allen, we'll start with you.
For the last several years, certainly, longer than the last three or four, we have been talking about the fact that we have been existing on a razor-thin margin for our budget and that should there be any kind of unexpected event, catastrophic event, that we, we recognize that we did not, we're not going to have the latitude to address it in a way that didn't have a significant impact on the school system as a whole. And, and we are there. You have been very dutiful in making sure that the board was aware that as this problem was presenting itself, that we were made aware that it was, it was starting to percolate up. At this point, at least as far as I'm concerned, it's, it's difficult for me to pose any questions. I think you've been very good at articulating what the issues are. It's over the next couple of weeks that I know that you will be working to present us with a, I don't even know that there are any options, truly.
Right.
I, I think it's going to be, it's going to come down to, there's going to be pain and, and there's going to be a lot of pain. And what's that going to look like? And everyone here is an advocate for this system. We all certainly have programs that are near and dear to us. And I foresee that some of the things that we've been doing and that have really led to the success of our students, we're going to be taking a hard look at and with the potential of scaling back or, or ending some of those things. And that's hard for me to say.
Absolutely. If I may comment each time as appropriate. Your questions you can ask, but also what I failed to say is with a level of precision right now, we're trying to get this to where we are. We're putting in place things to mitigate, to offset, do what needs to be done. You can expect there will be a categorical transfer, all those things to preserve the basic integrity of the school system. But what I can tell you, the outlook for next year is, one person made the analogy, kind of pull in our oars and just continue to move forward at the level which we think we can, but without a rapid progression in that sense. We've got to maintain the basic integrity of our school system so that we're not now regressing in terms of services that are yielding great support for our young people. And that's a balance. That's a balance we have to go through. And I'll be more, more inclined and more able to talk about that with specifics because there's going to be a lot of people after this who are going to come up and ask me questions. And so, I'm going to just try to minimize the frustration level. We don't have all that, those answers because it's predicated on a level of precision. I can't say certain things are going to happen, but you only know, we've only, we moved through this a couple of years ago. We know what those doors are, and I'm not going to say any of those words because I don't want to put the school system into a panic about 15. But we only have so many places to cut and where we need to go. And so, it's this whole sort of mesh of all that coming together. So, I appreciate the questions. I'll ask a level of specificity, but we don't have that piece at that level yet.
And I would say that it was a couple of years ago that we already did regress.
Exactly.
So, anything we, anything into next year would cause further regression. So, I, I believe we have regressed.
Keep in mind, several years ago, we cut 57 positions from the organization.
Exactly.
We have put none of those back.
Exactly.
And a lot of those, I mean, people were saying, you know, about the big, you know, cheeses and the muckety-mucks and all that kind of stuff, that rhetoric out there. But the bottom line is, we have cut that lean piece down. Our administrative costs during my tenure have gone from over 2% down to 1.5% of the overall operating budget. But yet, that becomes a conversation piece. You have to be aware of the tipping point in the sense of you cut too deep, things suffer and start falling apart. Mistakes become, start becoming made that then become concerns. So, great managers and leaders understand where those tipping points are. And so, but what I'm going to tell the story is if there are any further cuts, it's cumulative on top of what was already cut two, three years ago.
And when you-
Reducing the workforce.
When you consider that if we don't do our due diligence, especially when it comes to some of the federal and state mandates, that there will be an associated financial cost if we're not meeting our special ed requirements, if we're not-
Right.
-meeting some of our grant requirements, there are penalties involved, and some of those are very significant. And so, your point to loss of personnel, you can't just go in and, and just slice through without there being a significant impact beyond what people may believe.
Right. Absolutely.
Thank you, sir. I will be ready for our work session on the 30th and I guess, you know, stand by.
Yeah. And it's the, obviously, the responsible way we're approaching it, you know, clearly.
It is. It is. It's just difficult. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for making the budget challenges easy for the board to understand and for the audience to understand. It is simple to see the increases in the healthcare enrollment and costs, the unusually bad weather and increasing weather-related costs, and the rise in special education needs to meet our individual students. The issues we are facing are not unique to St. Mary's County Public Schools. These issues are impacting other school systems and business and industry as well. The nation is facing financial challenges, and we are not immune to that. So, I'm looking forward to hearing your recommended plan to address these issues at our next budget work session.
Thank you, Mrs. Washington. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Mrs. Washington. Mr. Matthews.
Well, as my, since my tenure as a board member has been all along, we've always worked on that shoestring budget that Ms. Allen talked about. We've reduced our employees. We've done everything. The one common denominator that I feel is we're lacking as a system is in funding. We are 24th out of 24th out of all the counties. We do so much with so little, and we're coming back to balancing the budget on the backs of our employees again. And I, you know, I, I know there's only so many places we can look, and there's so many places that we can figure out what, what our best route is. Healthcare is always going to be an issue. It's going to continue to get more and more expensive as we proceed. I see it personally. I, you know, I'm self, I insure myself, and my expenses go up every year. I just know they go up. The only thing that I can personally do to offset my own personal expenses is to make more money. So, here we are. I, I appreciate the data. I know it's, you know, it's, when I first got on the board, we had, you know, about an $8 million fund balance, and that was the bare minimum. And we've used it for things to, to continue on, hoping that when we get down the line, the sun's going to come out, the flowers are going to start blooming. We really need to reach out and go, this is the problem that we're having, and we need more funding.
But also, that, that fund balance at that time was also used to pay off things that were being mortgaged.
Yes.
And we got out of all of that, I mean, I, my first analysis of that, things that were not, that would be able to be freed up to then provide recurring dollars for other priorities within the school system. So, again, whittling that down to that level. And, and I think, you know, you just triggered a thought, if I may as well, there's another whole kind of theory of thought that needs to be advanced here too regarding healthcare. You said it's not going to go away, and it's, the issues are going to be a concern. But everybody can relate to the fact, most everybody can relate to the fact that if they drive a vehicle, they have to have insurance. And that you can have a carrier for 30 years and take a couple, have a couple accidents, or if you're in my category, you have many kids, you know, driving and have boys driving, what happens to your policy is it increases. If you have a couple accidents, you get a couple nasty grams. It increased the fact your rate's going to go up. And if you have a couple more of those, you get another nasty gram that says, we're going to drop you. But then, the following year, your rates go up. Adjustments are made. The other piece I want to come back and double back around it as a challenge is that there's, I don't get to watch a lot of TV, but I'll flip through the channels at late at night, and I came across the show that intrigued me. It was called 19 and Growing. And I was intrigued by it. And it's about a family that has 19 children, and that's a beautiful thing. But if that family worked for us... Okay? Now, so now you see my, what I'm, obviously, by that laugh, which I'm not trying to find any humor in any of this, the lesson has been successful because it defines a different reality. If that family of 19, the Duggars, worked for us, they're obviously going to have more individuals who are dependents that are going to take and need more healthcare, correct? And there's families that have one child or two child, children, and there's no differential in the cost for the Duggars versus the cost for the family here. And at the end of the year, the Duggars have accumulated a number of medical bills, and other family has accumulated a less amount of medical bills, and there's no recalibration in terms of a sliding scale that says next year, you pay more because you use more. See what I'm saying? The other piece is, to keep my empathy hat on, is that it's illegal for us to even make decisions about hiring based upon that. Or individuals with pre-existing conditions. So, but that's in the business thought because they're pressure points that when employees come in, we welcome them with open arms. But we can't say, do you have pre-existing conditions, or how many kids you have, or how many conditions does your husband or wife have? Because there go by the grace of God go I, in the sense that we're all going to need assistance at some point. We try to maintain health, healthy life, but we're all going to need that. So, by working to maintain a level of healthy workforce, educating our staff, looking at all of this, is our, are our only major ways of doing this. And again, that level of the fact that we're self-insured, that illuminates that even further. That illuminates that even further. But these are things that I don't think every person knows all the time about it. So, it's my concern, great consideration, is the question that needs to be called from a lot of our elected officials, the aspect of sustainability of the must-haves that are essential by law, by policy, but at the expense greatly of other variables. So, those must-haves for us are try to provide issues of teacher pensions, OPEB, healthcare, salaries, utilities. And guess what, guys? I went to school to be a teacher, to teach, to provide curriculum and programs that help kids. 5% of that budget, let me illuminate one more time, is devoted to those curricular items. That's where, you know, everybody wants the more, this, this program, that program, et cetera. So, next year, there will not be those advancements, all those new ideas, those innovative ideas that meet the needs of young people, trying to hang on to the core integrity of the school system. So, thank you, Mr. Matthews. You triggered some other thoughts.
Thank you. Nail on the head. I mean, this is, these are the issues we're going to have to deal with as a community, and I'm looking forward to your next steps.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Mrs. Corlby.
Most questions have been asked to my left, but a couple of things that I've been wondering about. We didn't have the workshops on the tech books, T-E-C-H books, correct? We did not.
We brought it forward. We provided information to the board, but the reality is, is that that is a sustainable expense over the course of the next four years. Because I compared and contrasted, if I were to remove every text, textbook from the school district right now, it would be an $8 million expense and to replace them. The aspect is looking forward futuristically to say, we want the most relevant information in front of our young people-
I understand why.
-and doing that. So, that's going to be something that in this budget is not- and doing that. So, that's going to be something that in this budget is not sustainable.
What do we, okay, good. That's what I understand. Okay. Now, are we going to buy any T-E-X-T books since we can't have any D-E-C-H books?
So, you're asking specifics regarding fifteen and the reality is based upon how this is setting up, we will not have a major textbook adoption because I've already said that it's going to cost money. So, for us to do a textbook adoption of any sort is on average, I already told you, the total compilation is eight million. On average, when we break that down into the core subject areas, it's anywhere between one and two million dollars for an adoption. So, that is not sustainable as well. Plus, I'm still convinced that that has to happen in a larger conversation, that if you're talking about efficiencies of taxpayer, taxpayer dollars, that the textbook, textbook, T-E-X-T becomes obsolete in a very quick period of time. The tech book piece is the fact of having the online, always updated material of relevancy. Just by virtue of conversation in terms of the news and current events, the world order has shifted in the last couple of months again. But yet we have textbooks that reflect a world order from five years ago. So, you know, maps and globes become obsolete. We don't purchase those at that level. Textbooks, et cetera, they will become obsolete in subject areas. And how do we strike that balance for efficiencies? So, let me finish the question. What we will provide is a small category of funding for replacement. So, for individuals who are thinking, my child won't have a textbook, that will not be true. It may not be the latest version. But then again, we are moving our school system away, as we've done for the last several years, from away from a didactic form of instructional delivery, which is, I teach, you listen, you open your textbook, you follow along. With the common core and the curriculum adjustments that are being made, all that supplemental material is being provided as relevant information from our schools that we're downloading from the compute, from the technology, from websites, et cetera, as supplemental. So, we're moving away from that.
Thank you.
Yep.
And a lot of, at the May conference, I learned there are other school systems that don't have the technology installed yet and they're going to go ahead and give the new test because you can take it on a piece of paper
Right.
without a computer and they're going to do it anyway and that should prove very interesting.
Which we're doing right now.
Yes. Are we going to, have we had, I know you cut the positions. I forgot what you said, thirty some, I think thirty-seven?
Fifty-seven in the past, yes.
Have you had any new ones occur?
No. What we, what we, what we'll examine though is, as I get this to a level of precision during our work session on April, I will examine whether we have to cut additional positions. That's an option. We'll have to see how wide our gap is, what we need to do in terms of balancing the budget. And so, although I haven't announced any, one has to think, what's the largest bucket in our budget that pertains to it is the overall bucket of staffing and personnel.
People, some of my constituents have been going through the budget, which is great that they're interested enough to try to read the budget online or whatever. And they were interested in what a stipend was and that's why I'm going to speak to it. And I talked to Mr. Norris this morning about it. And it's not cashing in leave, not necessarily. It might be being the chair of special ed, which I was when I was at Piney Point. It could be, and you can correct me, Mr. Norris, it being a coach. It's not just, it has, we don't cash in leave usually. Am I correct until we retire? Okay, I just want to straighten that out for the community. The only other thing, my husband got very involved with this.
Let me follow up on that because those are stipends, extra pay for extra duty. Those are issues of consideration, you know, those are on top of allocations. So, absolutely, that's an opportunity to examine that as well.
And he wanted to know, I'm not going to go through all of it, how do this year's monthly claims compare to last year's monthly claims? They've got to be higher. I mean, it's...
Well, and I just said to you, as I did the compare and contrast, I can give you the monthly breakdown regarding that. But the bottom line is, the total aggregate of where we are right now has yielded several million dollars of where we are currently. So, the comparison, that's what we're doing, comparing and contrasting from last year. And I shared with you the compare and contrast of the members that we've had an increase in terms of members and enrollees, subscribers, et cetera.
Definitely make it cost more.
Yeah, so, all those confluence of events create that concern and consideration. And again, nobody in this room has the ability or authority to predict that with accuracy and you can't predict what claims are going to come forward. So, I mean, I've said a lot of things that I believe are extremely important today. We still have May and June and a portion of April for us to continue to address the ongoing healthcare issues that we currently have.
Okay, thank you very much.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Corbey. Peter?
Thank you. First, I want to say thank you for your presentation, kind of bring it down to a level where I actually comprehend and understood not much political jargon inside of that as well. And recently, honestly, a program that was very near to me, something I've been in for a while, experienced cuts in our budget and cuts to where we, our meeting frequency was cut in half. All of our field trips that we planned, all of our trips were cut. We couldn't go on those trips anymore and the overall activity of the program just dropped considerably. And when that happened, I was honestly very disappointed and I was, me, myself and my other, my peers, my constituents that were in the programs with me, and not just the one, but others as well, were very let down and upset because they weren't able to participate in those programs anymore. And with your presentation, it's, now that I'm realizing with that simplicity that you brought it down to, you could explain it, there's only so much money that we have to work with.
Correct.
And like you explained, we have the things we have to have paying our teachers and paying for the healthcare as well and with transportation with buses and keeping the energy on in the schools. And there's only, like you said, five percent that we have for our curriculums, our programs and with that, the money we can have. And it wasn't until I really went in and looked at it when I understood that it's not we're just going and cutting things just to put monies necessarily somewhere else, but because we don't have necessarily all the money we can to necessarily push all these programs forward at one time. And you said before, we have to go slow to go fast sometimes.
Right.
And we have to wait until we have that money at one time where we can push these forward. And it was just for me personally and others as well that are in programs in their schools that are in extracurricular activities, that we want to be, go above and beyond and we are the best. But, Mr. Matthews, you put out twenty-four out of twenty-four in funding. And we do a lot with little we have, but still, we still do have a little. So, we have to balance that out. So, I mean, it's a lot for me to come on and grab and comprehend right now.
No, you've done a good job, but you also have to balance it out in terms of the fact that we have a citizen's population that provides the tax base.
Yes.
All of us pay taxes, that provides the services. Individuals on fixed incomes, individuals who don't have children in the school system, balancing all of those pieces out, but recognizing the school system as a viable entity in terms of economic development. And I've worked in many different communities and school districts and I ring the bell here to say, we've got a wonderful school system that has been made better through the progress and the work that all of us have done collectively. But it doesn't take much for that tipping point to occur and I've seen it happen where things start falling apart. And the next thing you know, there's more juvenile delinquency, more children out on the street, dropouts, all those things that create challenges for community as far as safety, prices of homes, cost of homes, home values. All those things are intricately related to safety of community and the educational system of the community. So, I bring that to that higher level, which Dawn's still here or not, she is back here. The military, we're very much of a transient community in a sense of mobility with the military. We talked about that earlier. The first question that individuals come into the community and ask about, who have children in the school system, who have children of school age, what's the quality of the schools? What's the safety? But you have to balance all that out. So, when people are talking about twenty-four out of twenty-four, all those different numbers, I've had conversations with a number of people who are running for elected office. And all I would like to see happen down the road is a summit of some sort, a conversation of where we want to be as a school system, where we want to be as public safety, where we want to be as parks and wrecks, and how we incrementally get there together as a community. If we value that we want this kind of school system with these kind of programs, then we get there together over time. So, the go slow to go fast has to be also balanced with the fact of how we get there, the needs of everybody else in the community, et cetera. And then any cuts, board members, as you know, this is not going in because people will make all, I'm just waiting for all the analogies and the rhetoric because we've been down these paths. This will not be an axe, using an axe to cut up the budget. It's with a level that you've highlighted and illuminated with a surgical scalpel to go in and make those cuts so that it doesn't have bearing on the overall integrity of the school system. What I said there is extremely important. It's the approach of going through every program category, et cetera, where you can and with a surgeon's scalpel with a level of precision, making those cuts as opposed to just saying, we're going to ax this off and ax this off and do this. I mean, I've been to communities and I've been involved in those kind of conversations where things are happening like that and it creates more vitriol. So, the goal is, is to maintain the psychological well-being of our school system. When you lead with the heart and you care about people who deliver the programs to our students, that's our budget message, programs, people and performance, that you can't pull the rug out from the individuals that basically have, who provide those programs for our people. So, how do you do that becomes the challenge. So, the board knows, they ask the what, I provide the how in terms of governance with it. So, excellent questions and excellent comments as always.
And with that, I know just yesterday, I happened to run in, I was walking to Chopticon. I walked in at the same time as someone else, a gentleman walking in. And he just moved in from New Mexico. He was coming in, moved from the base and was stationed at Pax River. And he came to sign his startup for, for classes.
Wonderful.
And I directed him into the guidance office. He needed some help and I was talking to him. And he heard about the school system and he wanted to sign his, his startup for all these programs that we have. And he was looking into it, she was going to be going into her junior year, and looking into it for maybe doing something at the Forest Center and doing these programs that we still are going to have and still provide. And we still have these programs. It's just some things are going to, like you said, with a surgeon's scalpel, go in and look at where we need money for other places, which is hard to do internally.
And using, you're right. And you got, I mean, I always talk about common sense. You know, common sense in leadership, common sense in democracy, common sense in government. It has to be defined and it has to be displayed. The same way, I mean, I've got three of my own wonderful children and they don't get everything they want. They, they're not able to participate and do this and do that based upon the fact of, you know, a variety of different factors. So, it's highlighting all the good things that we have, being able to maintain that as a basic core integrity of our school system is focused on ensuring that every child is college and career ready. We can't let that basic tenet fall apart. And making certain that continuum of offerings for our children, every child that comes into this school system, eighteen thousand strong, is finding a place for him or herself on that continuum. So, as we started, there's been some wonderful sort of serendipitous moments here to say today, we have parents in here who are advocating for further special education services, rightly so, because children present themselves with needs. How do we provide those services? So, every child along that continuum needs to be, find themselves for a way to challenge them to achieve their fullest potential. So, you, you get it at the student level because it all translates down to the child in the classroom. But we can't blow up the whole school system with this sort of reckless way. It's got to be with precision. It's got to be very tactical so that you don't create long-term stress for the overall school system. Because people got all kinds of ideas. I appreciate it. But again, they've got to be executed masterfully and artfully.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you, Peter.
Well, we've heard all kinds of comments. The fact is...
We don't have any money.
We're part of a growing community. We have a growing school system. And what does a growing school system bring? Everybody wants a number one school system. We are a number one school system and a number one community and a number one state. We are there. And it's like you say, we need to find ways to maintain this. However, a growing school system and a growing community brings what? More employees, obviously, more schools, increased utility costs and fuel, more buses, transportation issues. Most of the variables that we deal with are law-driven. We have to contract things. It's, you know, everybody knows that many of our programs that are instituted in the school system are law-driven. And these variables are probably here to stay, including the state and federal mandates, which don't provide funding in so many, many cases. You know, the words Affordable Care Act, I find interesting because the word affordable should have a new definition. You know, what is affordable? Employers, like the school system, it's costing, was it sixty-three dollars for, per individual for administrative costs. We didn't decide that. County commissioners didn't decide that. The people in this community did not decide that. That was something that's been decided by the federal government and other federal municipality, you know, processes. So, there's so many things. We have no control in this community as school people and as citizens. And here, we're trying to maintain the school system, a number one school system. And we have a new elementary school that's going to be opening up soon, the Captain Walter Francis Duke Elementary School. And it would, and I've said this before, and it would be a shame to put up a sign in front of that school that says, sorry, closed. And here, we're talking about and planning to build another high school in this county. We need another high school. Everybody in this room knows that. And it's going to take money. It's going to be more children, more students, more employees. And of course, the bills continue to rise because the cost of gasoline, and Mr. Hewitt's here, he knows, he's in the gasoline business. The price of gasoline goes up, diesel fuel, electric bill. Everybody probably in this room is having difficulty managing their electric bills. You know, you could put your electric thermostat down to fifty and wear two or three coats. That's what people are doing. That's what we do in my house. A lot of my friends have electric bills that are reaching eleven hundred, twelve hundred dollars a month here because of the cold weather and they're wearing two or three coats. I mean, this is what's happening to people.
Would you like to ask me what our monthly bill is?
It's phenomenal.
Four hundred thousand.
Eric, can you imagine that?
That's a lot.
Can you stomach that? Four hundred thousand dollars a month, school system pays for electric?
I mean, on average, we have our peaks and valleys, but during those colder months, I mean, we're paying between three and four hundred thousand dollars a month for electricity.
And we do our adjustments, all our thermostats. We watch that very, very carefully. Where we go from here, who knows? It all goes back to the taxpayer, unfortunately. And sometimes I wish we had our own printing presses and we can do what the president does, print more money when we need it. But we can't do that, obviously. We need to do the very best we possibly can and that's what we're going to do and that's basically what we're saying. We're going to go to the budget hearing next week. We're going to have workshops on the budget coming up in the next few days. We're going to be meeting with the Board of County Commissioners. They have some of the same kinds of problems, but not at the level of the school system because of the number of people we employ.
Right. And again, that's a very good point to focus in on. So, any comparisons to other entities is not apples to, apples to apples.
Right.
You have to realize, I was very articulate about the demographic and the numbers. And when I say womb to tomb, I literally mean across the continuum. We're dealing with babies, maternity, et cetera. And we're dealing with individuals in the retiree category who have a different set of needs as well, all across there. So... So the demographics need to be questioned when making comparisons, because ours is a much different demographic, a more robust demographic, where there's people along the way with it.
Well, it's not an easy road, you know, but at least, we did not, you know, cause the bad winter, nobody, it just happened, it's controlled by nature, you know. We had an extra, you know, rough winter this year, there's no question about it. The health costs, they will probably continue to increase.
That's the point I want you to walk away with. What do we do internally to address the constant considerations that are being given to healthcare? And the question is, is it sustainable? The answer is, no.
Well, people...
Without the expense of something else.
Yeah. Right. Either that, or, and people don't want me to say this, we're going to have to pay more. I mean, premiums are going to go up. Otherwise, it cannot be sustained.
Can we go to another company?
Okay. Well, going to another company, I don't think is the answer to it. Everybody in the country is plagued with this.
Yeah.
I talked to my family members out west, and everybody's plagued with this. You read the journals and the papers, and it's all there. The people who should be listening to this, unfortunately, are not listening. And I don't want to get involved with the political realm, but we do have a federal government, and I think our representatives are probably not listening to what's happening on home, on the home level with people in this room. The bill payers, the jobs that are not available, and people not making, you know, proper salaries, and it goes on and on and on, and it's part of the wheel, okay? And wheels keep going, they never stop because they're round.
Right. But can I comment on that one piece regarding going with different providers? You have to think, I mean, so I say that almost, you have to think with the end in mind, the issue in terms of increased level of cost of a procedure. What's driving all of this is the increased cost of medical procedures. I did that for a reason, to tell you about those costs of the prescription medication. That might be the first time a lot of people in this room have ever heard those costs. Alls they see is the copay and go, wow, and then I'll get the refills on top of it, et cetera, et cetera, and may or may not need them. Make good consumer choices. But the fact is, where we begin the consideration is, we offer a plan that offers certain coverages. How do you get that cost down? We can look at different providers, but you start whittling away at the plans and what they offer and what we pay for, et cetera. That gets into that whole consideration, eyes versus dental versus health versus this versus that. That's what starts whittling, starts eliminating and reducing that cost. So the main, one of the main pieces, I said, put that back up for consideration, Healthcare Committee.
Well, we are self-insured.
Correct.
The point is that what we receive from Blue Cross Blue Shield, Care First, is we pay, we pay them an administrative cost to address paying the bills. Beyond that, we are paying the bills. So whether, whether Aetna has a better administrative cost than Care First...
You start to eliminate what you're going to cover.
Right.
Because you're going to pay it.
Exactly.
That's what your options are.
So it's a function of the money we pay in is what is turned around and paid out to doctors and pharmacists and so on and so forth. It is purely an administrative fee for the various services that they offer.
Right. And if you're keeping track of words used today, I think I've said sustainable 10 times, enough for it, the question becomes, all those variables that are impacting all of this, how does that become sustainable? Something has to give regarding that for the overall amount.
Since we're in charge, because it's our self-insure.
Right.
Could we change it to charge more for brand-name drugs, medications, and less for generic? The other thing is, when, years ago, Marilyn Beech, who was the head of Special Ed, said, "I don't know why you have to have traditional." Traditional, by the way, for those of you that don't know, it costs a fortune. Well, she's not with us anymore, God bless her, but she used her provider network and talked to all of us, and I switched, because it was a lot less expensive and it helped the school system. So that is just, we got to take care of ourselves by doing what she did, by doing what I did.
Right.
Now, I'm not saying people do it, but it's a choice.
So there are things within your purview as a board to do. There are things within my purview to do as superintendent that I can do unilaterally and make adjustments. But there are many things when it comes to this that can't be done by either the board or the superintendent unilaterally without involving the labor associations in terms of negotiations. So you have to recognize that all of these are variables in terms of moving forward in the efficiencies.
It's not simple.
So the good news is, there's a lot of our representatives in those arenas are here today. They were able to endure with me a two and a half hour meeting yesterday on the same subject. This is nothing new to them, but they also recognize that there is a finite amount of money. It's not this insatiable appetite for educational dollars, et cetera, that we define need, conversation occurs, and then where we prioritize and put those dollars, again, the surgical approach with a laser-like specific, and accounting for every one of those dollars. So if the healthcare costs continue to rise, individuals are smart, they know that that's the expense of other things. There can't be a major increase for salaries, that's just common sense, that's not negotiations. So I go back to that one category of the budget, that very important paragraph that talks about incremental increases, the must-haves, because we can't just wipe out certain things, say tomorrow, just, I'll give a directive, let's just have the buses not run, save fuel for the next week. And we, I use that to illuminate, don't quote me on that, because that's not happening. I mean, some people take me literally everything I say. But I use it as an example. We don't have those kind of, I can't just say, "Mr. Clements, turn off all the electricity today, all the heat in all the high schools." Well, I'll have tweets and texts and all kinds of stuff with a matter of, as soon as we make the switch. But what we do is on breaks, and in the evening and on the weekends, we roll everything back. That's why we use Johnson Controls, it's an efficient measure so that we're not running full-tilt. We'll get community members who will, you know, give me feedback and say, "Your lights are always on." Well, yeah, we have to have a certain level of light, again, tipping point for safety and security versus full-blown illumination. So one of your recommendations that we've put forward, we're replacing all the lighting, exterior lighting through the process, through the state funding, exterior lighting in all of our schools, to be more efficient, to move away from the current lighting that takes a lot of additional energy. So all of these things start whittling away, but guess what I've found through my analysis the last several years, is all of these cost-saving measures are not large enough to keep up with the inflationary factors and the usage of everything else. I hope, you know, it's 12:07. We've talked a long time, Mr. Norris has to come up now and fill in the tactical pieces of this with the bubble sheets, et cetera, that reveal all of these things. He's got the easier part to do that, because it shows that depiction. We can continue the conversation, it's fluid, not static, want to bring forward, and I hope today that we've been able to present it in an understandable way, that people get the picture, that's what I wanted. So I thank you for your time.
Dr. Monarano, thank you very, very much, and just like you said, there'll be a lot of thinking going on in the next two or three weeks as we proceed to finalize our budget. Mr. Norris?
Yes, sir. Okay, in terms of our revenue, just a few things. Will we take a look at the OPEB contribution? Your OPEB contribution has been made. We made our OPEB payment, and then once we gave our, gave the information back to the county, they went ahead and made their portion on our behalf. So the OPEB payment here, their $2.9 million, has been made. When we get back to fixed charges, you'll see where we made our payment. Also on the teacher pension, we had paid the first three bills, we have paid the last bill, we have been reimbursed by the county for the $2.3 million, we must put out the money first. We get reimbursed back, we have made the final payment for the $787, that bill has been submitted to the county, we should get reimbursement for that. Again, that's all part of our cash flow piece in terms of trying to make sure that we have enough money to pay the bills, to pay everybody's salary and those kinds of things. You see down here, an evening high school, the $17,000, no money against it, we have eliminated that category in your FY15 budget, because really, we really don't have a evening high school, it will be all incorporated into the apex in the summer school piece up here so that we have that. Other than that, you see a number of what you would usually appear to be negatives, but these are actually positives here for the band rental, down here for the insurance refunds, again, down here for other refunds and those kinds of things. So on that side, we're doing pretty good. One other comment, again, you can see that we have received additional funds from Re Impact Aid to the total $123,000. We should be getting at least one more check for Re Impact Aid, and again, we do not get, even though we set up a receivable, we will know in June how much money we get from the Department of Defense, because we have over 30% of our, have a certain number of kids that are with the military, so we'll get that money in July. So that's it on the revenue side. On the expenditure side, one small correction, we had it in, but I don't know why it didn't appear. Again, most of the money on the contracted services for the abacus program that we have, we have let all but one of the abacus individuals that we have let go from the administrative category. The other one is in a critical position that we do have to keep through to the end of the year, and that's most of it. But we also have encumbered $45,000, which is part of the encumbrance over here, because we are responsible for paying for our international teachers for their become status to become residents, and so we are not paying for their dependents and spouses, but we are paying for them. So we have an encumbrance in there to handle that, and we are doing that through another lawyer so that we're all squared away there. You can see that the salary and wages, again, that's part for the deputy, and that's also overtime and those kinds of things that we have there, and that'll be covered. You can see by cutting back, we still have $62,000 in supplies and materials, a good portion of that will go to cover some of the shortfalls, and when you get your categorical, these will all be cleaned up. In contracted services, this additional money, we paid $109,000 for our maintenance agreement with the state for our fiber that was put in. There's $145,000 in your budget for FY15 to pay our appropriate share, and this was the contracted agreement that you signed with the state for all of that. Remember, the fiber was put in through a federal loan, a federal grant. Down here on contracted services for other instructional costs, that is for Korean STEM Technology leasing, and so that's just that piece that we have there for STEM. On special education, remember that this is part of our contracted services for our therapists, both with individual companies and with abacus, so that we have that, that'll be covered for the most part as part of our final categorical. And then the transfers, these are your non-public transfers, these won't be reconciled until the end of the year, but you can see we still have a $755,000 encumbrance there, and so what'll happen, this'll probably go away, because we put the encumbrance in, as we get the students in, when they come out, we don't immediately take the encumbrance out, we try not to go back and forth all the time, so most of that'll go away. The $1,000, I do have to find out what that is, I didn't bother going back for $1,000 at this point in time, but I'll have that for you next time. The healthcare, the salary and wages, that is the two LPNs that we heard are Ns, because we can't find LPNs. You also have, not only this rectified in your FY15 budget, you also have two more anticipated LPNs to our Ns, so not only is this covered, but two additional will be covered as part of your FY15 budget. One on the backside, you can start seeing some of the impacts of the winter, the contracted services for operation of plant, these are for the contractors that handled our snow removal and those kinds of things too, so you can see some of the impact. As we go through and do the final categorical, we will have a complete list of all of the costs that we have for contractors and weather-related issues when we go back through when we do And then finally, in terms of fixed charges, you can start to see the overage in health insurance in terms of the group health, $299,000 at the end of March. We still have April, May, and June to go through too. It does fluctuate, it goes anywhere from, you know, $300,000 to $600,000 depending upon who's doing what and when we have breaks. I would anticipate that is part of the spring break, that there will be a number of parents who will be taking their kids to their doctors or their braces, or kids coming back from college. So I would anticipate probably at the end of April, beginning of May, that we'll have another fluctuation there, that's all part of the cycle. Workers' comp, you can see that we still have $161,000 encumbered, we're showing a little overage at this point in time, we are getting more workers' comp cases, and so that's part of the encumbrance there, we'll see how that goes to the end of the year. The money down here for post-employment health and life, remember when the Porticonne Commissioners approved your FY14 budget, they said that anything left over in '13 in healthcare had to go to OPEB, that's that $90,900 that we had to put into OPEB, it made your OPEB payment over $5 million, but we had to include this $90,900. So again, this is where we made the full allocation in terms of our post-employment benefits, so that we would have that. We will have some money left over social security, tuition reimbursement, we are going through now and encumbering those funds, so you'll see that being negative done out. And finally, no real action in terms of capital outlay, so that's kind of where we're at right now, and I'll answer any question that you have.
Thank you, Mr. Norris. Peter?
No comments, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mrs. Crosby?
I guess we don't really know how much more money we're going to need for this year, do we?
When we do our categorical and we finally take a look at all the expenses and put that all together, and we bring that to the board, we'll have our number then.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I don't want to go be too premature in terms of looking where we're at, but that's Dr. Monarano, and seeing, you know, what all the cutbacks are doing and the hiring freezes and all those kinds of things, will all impact on the amount of deficit that we have.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
No questions, thank you.
Mrs. Allen?
Thank you for keeping us straight.
Well, we tried.
Thank you, sir. The next regular board meeting will be on Wednesday, April 30, 2014, at 5:30 PM in this room. Board members, just a reminder, we are due at Leonardtown Middle School at 1 o'clock for the project demonstration. This meeting is adjourned.
You're going?